I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
Due to your privilege, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Grudy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Aaron Lundstedt.
Here.
Stacy Rooney.
Here.
Pat Grudy, President.
Okay, so we know that all board members are present tonight. Our agenda will open up for public comment. Um, I understand we had a number of comments uh this evening. And then we will have a discussion on the potential addition of an all-day in-person student attendance option to the current attendance options after spring break, right? All right, let's open it up for public comment then.
Okay, the first letter I have is from Carrie Van Brunt. Members of the Board, with one child engaged in hybrid learning at LHS, I am ambivalent about the possible addition of the full-day in-person option. Of course, we all want our children back in school full-time, and there is evidence to suggest that this can be done safely. While infection rates are down, we are not out of the woods yet, and it is premature to start lifting restrictions if we hope to see the downward trend continue. The more contagent ver- contagious variants of the virus are poised to be the dominant strains this spring. Most concerning is the variant emerging in California that appears to be not only more contagious, but more deadly. Regions of the country are lifting mitigations and putting this progress at risk. Widespread vaccinations are on the horizon, but their efficacy against the variants are unknown. If full-time in-person becomes reality, I ask that you consider the timing of this option. Many people in the community have traveled freely, and we must assume that they will continue to do so for spring break and flock to the warm regions without public health mandates such as masks and distancing. Their return to the community puts us all at risk. Two weeks of virtual learning after spring break for all students before returning to the classroom would be prudent and put many minds at ease. Regards Carol- Carrie Van Brunt. Um, the second message is from Jen Carney. Dear Board Members, I ask that you consider the following as you discuss the opportunity for full in-person learning this semester. My father-in-law is an eighty-year-old retired fire chief waiting for his turn for the COVID vaccine. If you asked him, he'd tell you he is reluctantly willing to wait if it means teachers get vaccinated so the kids can get back in school. I'm sure I'm not the only one with an older friend or family member eagerly waiting their turn. And I'm certainly not the only parent of an LHS senior longing to give them even just a few weeks of in-person learning before they graduate from the school they love. Illinois puts educators at the top of the list for one purpose: to return students to in-person instruction. The very data that was cited as reason to postpone hybrid in the fall now clearly supports an in-person option. We can no longer point to Carmel and Oak Grove as outliers. High schools as close as Northfield, Lake Zurich, and Barrington are offering students the options for in-person learning five days a week. Every district has its challenges, challenges, and there will always be concerns related to distancing and variants and so on. We owe it to our kids to question convention, take calculated risks, think creatively, use evidence, and reason to find solutions. If these approaches sound familiar, it's because they are cornerstones of our daring mission. The same mission we ask our students to live by and whose logo features a quote from Maya Angelou that reads, "Success is loving life and daring to live it." Hybrid was a positive first step, but it falls short of expectations for a district that has consistently set the bar among its peers. The easy thing to do is to stay the course and ride out the year. The right thing to do is to give our kids the chance to have full in-person learning this semester, even if only for a few weeks. Thank you. The next message is from Julie Brown. Please vote yes to offer a full-day option after spring break to those that choose to attend. Our kids need to be back in front of their teachers. Thank you. And the next message is from Vicki Mitchell. Good job with hybrids so far. My son is really enjoying it, and thank you for managing D-128 with common sense and integrity thus far during this once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. I very much appreciate the COVID testing that is being done currently. However, I feel strongly that the testing program should be strengthened and expanded. Please consider updating the COVID testing spreadsheet to at least two times per week, increasing the number of tests given to reduce lines and allow greater participation, and making testing mandatory for in-person schooling. Students who decline to test and are not exempt from testing are welcome to stay remote. As far as the all-day option, I would only support that option for this academic year if social distancing of six feet or more can be maintained. My son has sixteen people in one class currently, which is too many in my opinion. He has also informed me that six feet is already not practical in some places like hallways and doorways. One suggestion is to allow the seniors only an all-day in-person option if you are able to spread them out to maintain social distancing. Under that scenario, you could add picnic tables outside under a large canopy for lunch periods. Of course, lunch would be a grab-and-go only. On a separate note, please continue to enhance ventilation in classrooms, which which includes air purifiers, student desk cleaning, strategically opened windows, and retrofitting equipment as needed. Classrooms which have poor ventilation or no open windows should only be used in a minimal way, if at all. Thank you.
Mary Taduric Communications.
The next message is from Elaine Vong and Greg Salton. Superintendent Lee and Board of Education, we understand that the Board of Education is considering a full-day in-person option after spring break. We urge you to consider the following. One, significant COVID-19 spikes in cases have occurred after every major holiday in the last year: Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. If D-128 in in institutes a full day of in-person instruction, please have it be delayed until April 12th. This would allow people to return from traveling, though still ill-advised at this time in a pandemic, and see whether they develop symptoms in the ensuing fourteen days per Illinois Public Health Department guidance. Two, while Lake County continues to roll out the vaccine and testing has been widely widespread availability, recent developments with the variants detected in the U.S. and Illinois create an uncertain evolving situation. This is not to say that in-person instruction cannot resume for those who select that option, but that we have to be cognizant of how we use testing. There was, there was an FDA bulletin issued January 8th, 2021 regarding variants and PCR slash rapid PCR testing, warning that one rapid PCR instrument and two PCR regions widely used by CLIA high-complexity testing labs had issues with detection of variants. Furthermore, the FDA revised its guidelines for developing COVID-19 diagnostic tests on February 22nd, 2021, stating that the FDA now expects all companies seeking EUA to perform testing against all known variants at the time of submission. It should be pointed out that currently our knowledge of variants is lacking in the U.S. since we only recently started initiatives to perform whole genome sequencing to understand the prevalence of variants in the U.S. Currently, the U.S. does whole genome sequencing on 0.36% of positive cases. State levels range from .02% to 2.6%. Data from 2009, 2021, and she provides a a web link for further information. The district should not let up testing of students and staff attending in-person instruction and sh- and should maintain flexibility to pivot to other testing. See point three below. And I'm sorry if you're hearing my dog bark. My turn tonight. Number three, the school district should be investigating other options for testing besides lateral flow assays. Abbott was seeking, was seeking an amended EUA for an asymptomatic indication of their binax now antigen testing. Even with that indication, the ability of lateral flow antigen assays to detect positive cases with lower prevalence of disease is not well-established. D-128 should investigate using PCR testing as a pool for surveillance. The size of the pools should be reflective of the positivity rates seen at LHS or VHHS over the preceding week and should be selected so the pool size multiplied by the prevalence rate is less than 1.0. Otherwise, statistically, a pool would be positive every time it tested. As a consultant in the medical device and pharmaceutical industries, I've worked in the last year on several COVID-19 diagnostic projects, including launching new COVID-19 test instruments and the company conducting high, high-throughout testing in CLIA high-complexity laboratory. If you need information on companies able to assist with PCR pooled testing, I would be happy to share companies I've found through my work. Thank you. And I do have one letter that came in slightly past the deadline, so I don't know if you want me to-
Yeah, we can read it. Go ahead and read it.
Okay. Um, this letter is from Diana Groatz. Good evening. During the board meetings, during, excuse me, during the many board meetings, I have watched during the pandemic, there is often discussion about the stakeholders, the teachers, students, community. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the board and inform the community that district support staff has been back in the school buildings since August of 2020, and I do not think buildings and grounds staff ever left. Pause to think about that for a minute. What did your life look like in August of 2020? Were you going to work into your office to work? Are you going into your office to work currently? While support staff and B&amp;G staff are evidently not considered stakeholders, they are devoted employees that have been physically in the building, ensuring that the school functions as it should. I would encourage the board to try and run the school without the support staff and B&amp;G staff that are often overlooked, not considered stakeholders, and have been and will continue to be significantly impacted by board decisions. When you consider bringing back students for a full day, what impact does increasing the density in the building have on support staff and B&amp;G? Not just from a safety standpoint, which should be a consideration, but from a workload standpoint. The support staff and B&amp;G staff have been and continue to be nimble, delving into complexity and ambiguity every workday during these challenging times. I would ask the board to be aware, seek to understand the varied experiences and realities of others during their decision-making process. Thank you for your time. And that is all.
Okay. All right, so with that, we'll uh open up the discussion. I'll turn it over to Dr. Lee.
Okay, good evening. Uh, obviously to the board and everybody on the district leadership team and uh right now, the hundred and twenty people that are participating in the meeting, we appreciate that. So um, as Pat indicated from the agenda item, um, we are here tonight to discuss the possible addition of an all-day in-person student attendance option to existing options after spring break. So we want to do several things uh this evening, kind of got a working um uh agenda that we want to move through and that will help us facilitate discussion uh and questions. But um, we're going to ask Pat to review the metrics that are reviewed at the board meeting, so we have a good understanding of that. I'll ask Brian to do a quick overview of the CDC IDPH guidelines again. Uh, then uh, we want to take a little time and talk about rationale for consideration of uh an additional option, including um metrics, external and internal within the school district. Uh precautions and protocols are binax now testing, educator vaccinations and the status, um, social distancing in the fifty-person space capacity against IDPH, LCHD, um, guidelines and liability after uh an additional conversation with uh school council on that. Um, we want to talk about retention of uh current options, which we think is very important. And then um, finally, addition of all-day in-person student attendance to existing options, what a schedule would look like, a start date for that, lunch, transportation, and other considerations that may go um, that may go with that. So um, that's essentially what we'd like to do tonight and answer questions along the way and certainly at the end, but have a dialogue with the board. So uh depending where we're at when um, we conclude uh tonight, there are several um, action steps that we would want to move forward with uh before coming back to the board with a proposal and a recommendation uh perhaps next week, um, so uh we can move this forward. So I think that's what the evening looks like, and we certainly want to make this work. Um, you know, for the board as well. So just to start tonight, and again, as I said at the board meeting last week, we want to understand the metrics, we want to understand CDC IDPH guidelines uh in the context of our decision-making. It doesn't mean that we won't make decision, doesn't mean that we can't make decisions, means that we need to all understand that and then the implications of that. So Pat, if uh Brian can pull uh the metrics up, if you want to uh walk us through, because we may have a whole different audience here tonight than we had at the board meeting last Monday.
Yeah, and then I just, I just want to clarify, just because I know this came up in the comments and I know uh an email we got. So we, we are not planning a formal vote this evening, right? We're just going to have a discussion and review our options here.
Yep.
Pat Grudy, President.
Okay. Well, we would, we would conceivably vote on it as early as the next meeting next week, though, correct?
Yes, and we'll talk about that at the end, depending on, you know, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to have a special meeting? You know, between the committee meetings, after the committee meetings, before the committee meetings? Or do you want to have another special meeting just to handle this issue and and uh vote on it? So.
Okay.
Pat Grudy, President. Pat Grudy, President. Pat Grudy, President.
All right, so we did review uh that slide. This one you can get rid of, actually. Go to the next one. Okay, um, these were data as of last week um that we reviewed at the board meeting. And uh, good news, both Libertyville and Vernon Hills, over the last several weeks, the um rolling average COVID positivity rate has come way down. Um, so we're uh Vernon Hills uh as of last week was running 2.17%. Um, that's a seven-day rolling average. Actually, as of today, they're, or they're up slightly to 2.43%. Um, but regardless, a lot of progress has been made um over the last several weeks. Uh, the next number that's important is this number of new cases, and it's a seven-day cumulative number of cases per 100,000 population. Um, this number has actually uh gotten a lot better over the last several weeks, but in the last week, it's gone from seventy-one in Vernon Hills to about a hundred and forty. All right, so um, that, that just means that we've kind of plateaued in terms of our improvement here. We're seeing a slight uptick. And to put that in perspective, um, that means we're really fluctuating according to the new CDC guidelines, um, which have been revised very recently um, within Vernon Hills, and it's also true in Libertyville. We are running between the substantial transmission and high transmission um, part of their uh metrics, all right? So we haven't yet moved down into the moderate transition, which is where I had forecasted we would be moving when I saw the seventy-one. Um, but we backslid here just slightly um in the last week, okay? But you know, in all honesty, that means the difference between instead of about two and a half to three cases per we- week, we're seeing about four cases per week across the, across both towns. All right, next slide. Next slide, uh, this just kind of shows you the trend. Um, and again, um, those positivity rates have have come down quite a bit. Um, the top box was what I had shown a month ago at the board meeting. The bottom box is what I showed last week. Um, so you can see a month ago, we were running at almost uh seven percent, somewhere between six and seven percent. And this month, we actually have um brought that down between two and three percent, and we're still running within that range. So really, a, an improvement almost by a factor of two and an even bigger improvement, frankly, in the uh number of new cases per hundred thousand. All right, so uh again, slight uptick this week, but significant improvement from uh late December, early January. Next slide. Uh, Libertyville, really, the same story holds true. Um, last week, I reported the seven-day positivity rate at 1.53% and about sixty-four cases per 100,000 population. Um, so again, we were nearing that moderate transit transmission um, range, uh, which has an upper limit of forty-nine. Uh, and if you looked at the trending of the, of the number of new cases per day, it really looked like that was going to trend down into that. Um, unfortunately, that hasn't happened. It has upticked a little bit. Uh, next slide. Again, Libertyville right now is running at 2.16, and the case rate actually has doubled since that last number. It's now at about a hundred and twenty-two. Uh, again, a month ago, uh, much like Vernon Hills, we were running between five and six percent on the positivity rate, and now um, we seem to be holding it two plus or minus a little bit. Um, so again, a significant improvement. And the uh case rate um, not down quite as much um at a hundred and forty-two point one on the twenty-fourth of January, now at a hundred and twenty-two point one. Um, but still much better than uh late December, early January numbers. All right, so overall, in the two communities, um, a significant amount of improvement. Again, I want to emphasize that's great news. Um, but please heed the latest CDC guidance, which is to be vigil- vigilant and help us to continue that downward trend. Um, so we don't see an uptick here over the next weeks and months.
Lisa Hassel, School Board.
Yeah.
Can you just remind us for those of uh the community members who weren't at our, weren't able to join us at our last board meeting, where you aggregate this information from?
Sure, good, good question, Lisa. So all of this data comes from a uh a website that is run by Northwestern University. All right, so uh unlike in months past, I had actually gotten the data from the Daily Herald website and then manually calculated a lot of the numbers. This, this data is coming directly from uh the website that is published daily by Northwestern University. And it's, and it actually represents the two major zip codes of the district. So six oh oh six one is Vernon Hills, six oh oh four eight is Libertyville. It's not comprehensive, including all the different zip codes that we have. But this is how we've historically been tracking it.
And can you just a- again, as a reminder, why we're not using Lake County Health Department data?
Well, so the late, first of all, the Lake County Health Department testing data, if you look at their schools dashboard, um, hasn't been updated, I don't think, since the November timeframe. Okay, so that's the main reason we, we pivoted from um, looking at the Lake County Health data. I mean, I still have some of that in this package, I think. Um, but also, uh, you know, I think we're trying to look more specifically at our community. I do have Lake County Health data from, for our two communities coming up here, but it's basically the, the same story as what we're seeing in this dashboard. But they haven't updated test positivity in a long time.
Right. Thanks for clarifying.
Yep, thanks. Okay, next slide. Um, so uh, these, just to clarify, the red, yellow, green here um are the metrics thresholds based on the IDPH guidance. All right, so uh, this really just shows that both Libertyville and Vernon Hills are both um running and have been through the month of February, running in the green metrics um uh, range uh for testing positivity rate. All right, so again, um, that's good news. I do believe that in part reflects um some of the testing that we've been doing um, in our, our, just our general population, which is obviously largely asymptomatic, and that in and of itself, I think, will help drive those numbers down, but um uh, you know, nevertheless, according to thresholds established by IDPH, our, our positivity rate looks very, very good. Next slide. Uh, likewise, the hospitalization data, no real, no real trends here to report, and I, I think by all accounts um in our area, this is region nine data. This is not specific to Ver- Vernon Hills or Libertyville. This is only reported for region by region. Um, so it includes all the zip codes that would be part of region nine, including those in Lake County McHenry. Um, but right now, the um, both the ICU and hospital bed capacity looks, looks quite good in the region. Next slide. Okay, this is the data from the uh Lake County website. So uh, really, at the end of the day, uh, it's a slightly different number in terms of the metric and the way it's calculated, but it basically shows how far we've come since um since December and early January, where we saw that tremendous increase in the uh incidence rate. Um, and uh, you know, we, we've just made a lot of progress. All right, so we're really back into the range where we were um, sort of in the uh, late fall area in September. Next slide. That was Libertyville. The next slide is Vernon Hills. It shows basically the same picture. And the next slide. Again, these are just the new metrics from CDC, so um, we'll focus on, on the testing side, which is the lower row there. Um, obviously, there, we're in what would be considered the low transmission uh rates, since our testing positivity rates are, are below five percent. Um, however, our total new case rate, so again, that's the cumulative number of cases um in seven days uh per 100,000 of population, um, continues to be uh really fluctuating between the substantial and the high re- uh metrics regions. Um, we're, we're certainly hoping to see that shift in the, in the coming uh, coming weeks into the moderate transmission range. Again, which will, will only happen if we continue to practice um, good mitigation, not only in the schools, but throughout the community. Okay, so that's where we are with metrics.
Thanks, Pat. Uh, Brian, you want to do a, a overview of the um CDC IDPH guidance?
Brian Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
Yeah, so just, you know, review of some of the stuff that we did. We talked about it at the last meeting and you know, things that are in place in both of our schools um that we've had uh since the beginning. You know, schools have to have universal and correct use of appropriate personal protection equipment, including face masks. Um, according to IDPH, no more than fifty individuals from gathering in one space. Um, physical distancing of six feet should be observed as much as possible. Um, self-symptom screenings, um, temperature checks before entering the buildings for all students and staff. Um, school-wide cleaning of disinfect- infection. Um, contact tracing in place, and that's done by our school nurses in conjunction work with, working with, you know, all of our families and the Lake County Health Department. Um, you know, surveill- so some of the other things um that we also, you know, have that help us in our mitigation is our testing that we have available and um, we know, we can also talk about, and I know it was mentioned about uh vaccinations available to school staff members, so.
Princess Lee, Superintendent.
It's just basically the review of what we've talked about many times, and um, Monday night at the board meeting, we rev- uh, we reviewed, Bryant reviewed for us the uh updated CDC guidance, which is included in the uh comments he just made. So, you know, what would be a rationale at this point for consideration of um adding an all-day in-person uh option to the two options that we're already doing, a hybrid half-day and uh remote? There is a confluence or, or maybe a meeting of um several factors that open the door for um, you know, our board's consideration and other boards in the area of high, that work with high schools of looking at um, adding this option to old, to the uh current tool bag. And um, some of those things um are, uh, we've just heard, one, uh, the metrics in our external co- uh local community, so Libertyville and Vernon Hills, are dramatically better than they were when they peaked in November. Um, and almost historically low, although, Pat, you can comment on that, I think. Uh, but just looking at the data charts, our internal school community, so within uh Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School, uh, we know from testing about if you uh put our athletes um in there, and that number will continue to go up because there are more students involved in spring athletics. Um, and they have to test, so we're probably at seventy-three or seventy-four percent of our students. And I think we're at ninety, ninety-plus um, the number of um, staff members that are testing weekly. And our testing numbers are good. Um, you know, today, the power of the testing, uh, today, um, we had an individual uh that's uh connected to one of the athletic programs, and then we had another student or another individual, uh, that person um, um, who tested um positive in our binax now testing. And what that's allowed is um, you know, our nurses to work with Lake County Health Department and do uh appropriate contact tracing. So both of those cases for those individuals, um, you know, might not have been discovered if we weren't doing weekly testing. So the one thing about testing, um, and Pat, you can weigh in here, but I think uh, you're kind of our testing expert. Uh, but one of the things about testing is that the more people we test, the better handle we get on, uh, better handle we get on our local school community. And so uh, our numbers have been good. I think I did my- And so uh our numbers have been good. I think I did my sixth or seventh test last Friday. I do Friday testing. That's my scheduled time. Um testing is very easy. Uh it's very brief and it's very non invasive. Uh in order to do that. So uh that's a good tool for us to have in the toolbox. But the numbers it is yielding um would be favorable. Uh and as Pat indicated, as our testing numbers are reported to the state. Uh it's probably helped bring the overall numbers in the communities um down. The other thing that we talked about a little bit are are um you know, precautions and protocol. So just to review. The um leadership teams working with um buildings and grounds that Diana Gratz commented on earlier. Um you know, have done a terrific job in getting our buildings ready for kids to come back to school. Um on January nineteenth. So uh if you've been in either of the buildings, uh you will see that that's uh very obvious. So um but again, just to review, part of that protocol is, you know, uh mass temperature scanning when the students come in. Uh at the beginning, a requirement for students to follow and staff to follow uh PPE requirements. While they're in the building, uh creation of uh one way hallways. Um and pathways for students and staff to move uh throughout the building as a part of our buil- building protocols. And then um I just spent a couple of minutes on our By Next Now testing. And then the other big development over the last several weeks are educator vaccinations in Lake County. We have a very unique partnership between the Lake County Health Department and the Lake County Superintendent's Association. Um here and um you know, through uh the end of last week, all the invitations were sent out to any educators or. School personnel uh in the county who had not um um who had not uh in before. Uh received an invitation to be vaccinated. So uh this week, uh the rest of the staff who is up for their first round of vaccination uh should be completed. And in addition, uh the folks that were vaccinated four weeks ago are also starting to receive their invitations to be uh getting their second vaccines. This week. So following the math on that sometime uh right after spring break. Uh if the vaccination pipeline uh continues in Lake County the way it has. Then we should have all of the um school personnel at Lake County who wanted to be vaccinated um vaccinated. The other piece of this and um what I mentioned at the board meeting on Monday. Is that we and other uh school districts, particularly at the high school level, we have to wrestle with. Is uh the six foot social distancing and the fifty person space uh capacity limit. So a couple of things. Schools like us that are looking at this are looking at the six foot distancing uh more more uh literally or broadly. As IDPH here. So Bryant mentioned before, and this is right off the IDPH uh website. Maintain a distance of at least six feet from other adults and from students when feasible. Um we followed up with a question uh with Lake County Health Department a couple of weeks ago in our weekly meeting. And the question uh was something like this. So uh as schools um you know, have some other dynamics like we do, in other words, there are some, you know, positive things, there are testing, they've got all our protocols in place. They do those types of things. Uh six foot distancing is the barrier uh for schools really um looking at that. So as some schools consider that. And if they choose to open, what are the ramifications from either the governor's office or from uh IDPH? And uh the response was one that I think we know, but was along the lines of. You know, the governor and IDPH um you know, are are likely to leave that decision making up to local school districts. So the rule of um the rule of thumb that people are starting to talk about is six foot or the best you can. Keeping six foot as your target and doing the best job you can. The reality of the situation in high schools, and I could extend this to junior high schools and middle schools. Which are set up much like high schools with students moving around the building, individual classes is best. If there's not flex on that six foot guideline, then the question becomes, when are we ever going to open school again? Right? It is it now? Is it the fall? Is it a year from now? Is it a year and a half or two years from now? Uh because that's the operative um question. And to tie a couple of things together, I had a follow up conversation with our uh chief counsel, Len Himes uh from um. Uh we used to call him Scary On, but uh Heim's in Prochar now. Uh and Fester. And uh on this question, and the question we were wrestling with at the beginning of the year is, it's still true that. School districts have no liability insurance. It's still true that you can't buy it in the private market. It is still true that as a government agency, there's a higher threshold uh for somebody to meet to be successful in a liability case. Um however, um prior to this, uh the the real uh rule of thumb was only if. You follow the guidance of your uh relevant uh governing agency, government agency. For us, that would be Governor IDPH ISBE, of course. Um and they would follow the guidance of the CDC. So the difference in where we've moved now is that when we had this discussion in July and August and September. Um as part of the equation, and and by the way, and Pat, you've said this before. The lack of liability insurance never was a major part of any dis- discussion that we had, nor was it a major part of any decision making. That we made. I want to make that clear um again. But what's tilted here is that. Because we are doing so many other mitigations, okay, because we've got good uh mitigations and PPE in place. Because we're testing, because our staff's being vaccinated, because we're working closely with the health department. The the legal opinion on this has shifted to, yes, we would be able to defend you because you're doing many other things. That we did not have in place before when we were doing decision making. So to tie this back to possibly adding uh an option that would allow us to um bring um students back. Uh some students back all day in person is that in order to do that. We would have to do six foot social distancing or the best we can, using the six foot social distancing as a target. In order to be able to do that. Um and that is the same conversation other superintendents and boards are having. Um you know, in roughly the same timeframe that we're having our discussions. As we look at not only what we're going to do now, but possibly how that will impact decision making, you know, moving into the fall. So uh we have to get comfortable with that concept if we're going to look at. Um if we're going to look at uh moving forward with providing an option uh for students in the future. Now, in the fifty foot uh capacity, and I've said this before, it's a bit frustrating. And it's a bit frustrating because during the school day, for us, three twenty five or earlier. We can only have fifty people in a space. It doesn't matter how how big the space is. So if we wanted to put fifty one people in a gym. Social distancing twenty five feet apart, we would be in violation of the the fifty foot guideline. Okay, um so uh that's been a frus- a bit of frustration to people. The the other thing that people need to be cognizant of on the fifty foot. Um space capacity is that at prior to three twenty five, we can only have fifty people in a gym. At three twenty five plus one second, because we've now moved to after school. We can put a couple of teams in the gym, officials, scorekeepers, uh trainers. And then we can put up to fifty fans in in a a high school gymnasium. So now you can do up to a hundred people. Uh let's say in a gym. And so what we're told through several conduits, and I've verified this with my conduits as well, is that um. Um one of the committees that works on guy guidance and guidelines for IDPH has made a recommendation, IDPH. To lift the for fifty person space capacity limit. Now, that was a week, a week and a half ago. We haven't seen that come to fruition. We haven't seen IDPH act on that. But it would seem to make sense that that would happen uh would need to happen because of the. Obvious difference between three twenty six in the afternoon and three twenty five um in the afternoon. So where that fifty person space capacity comes in uh to play for us will be as we navigate logistics for. Lunch, depending on how many students would elect uh the all day option. So some of those things coming together uh really provide the impetus for us to take the next step in having the having the discussion that we're having tonight. Um and having us talk about a concept uh that we possibly, we've talked about leadership team and we can possibly move forward with. Um moving forward. Uh I would say the other thing that we feel very strongly about is that. We have provided parents options. So we have a percentage of our population across the district that's in remote. Uh about fifty percent. We have about fifty percent of our parents who have chosen a half day hybrid. And um based on uh the concept that we're going to talk with you about tonight, parents would retain those options. So. We don't think midstream, and it's close to the end of the year that we're uh we are. Uh that it would make any sense to take choice away from somebody that wanted remote, which were, by the way, were required to offer from the state. Or the half day hybrid, because we may well have a number of parents who are comfortable with their kids being here a half a day. In more limited numbers, but not whole day with larger numbers of students. So we'd want to, we'd want to retain. Uh those two options as part of uh what we would talk about um conceptually. So the addition of an all person in um uh in person student attendance day for us to existing options. Uh we have a block schedule that has worked well for us um so far. So Bryant, if you want to put the, if you want to put this schedule up, this is the schedule that we use, and this would build on our existing schedule.
Pranjits Lee Superintendent. Pranjits Lee Superintendent.
So uh Bryant, if I asked you the question and said, okay, um you know, students in currently half day. And if we offered them a whole day option, how how would their day look different?
Brian Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
So r- right now, if they were a group A student in. Person on Monday, they would come into school for periods one and two and then um. You know, go home and be remote for periods three, four. That's current. So i- if they decided to do in person all day, they would um come in for periods one and two. They would have uh lunch from eleven fifteen to twelve thirty five. Um and then they would be in school for periods uh three and four until the end of the day. And then the next day, the blue days, um you know, again, they would uh normally be in just for period five and six in the morning, remote for seven and eight. Um they would instead, again, come for period uh five at the beginning of the day and um through lunch. Um and then they would have periods seven and eight um in school.
And the same would be true on Thursday and Friday.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Okay. And so the teachers would still be teaching in multiple modalities. So they would still be teaching some students in front of them and some students at home. Um in remote. And so we have the opportunity to build on uh the existing schedule. Um that we have right now, the length of the periods. Um one of the challenges in the middle of the day, and it's a list, it's a logistics challenge. One of the challenges during the day, once we um. Um you know, reach out to the parents initially, and then we reach out to them a second time. Uh to make a commitment will be to determine how many students would select that all day option. And then what do we need to do at lunchtime? So um you know, we've got office hours and lunchtime built into that um. Uh built into that middle part of the day. Uh we still need that middle part of the day because we would be moving students in and out and um to the building in the hybrid half day. Um so we'd have to determine how many students we have, um breaking them into lunch spaces right now, at least of fifty or less. Um in spaces uh moving forward. And so that would be a logistics issue that we, you know, would need to work through. Um you know, I asked Tom and John a week or so ago, just to kind of start thinking. Uh in depth with their uh teams about what the possibilities are, but we'd have to have an idea on what the numbers are. Now, um normally during the year, we allow seniors to do out lunch, and what we've done this year. What we would do is allow any of the students to do out lunch. So part of what we do when we do initial surveying. Um just to get a handle on that would be to ask people, you know, is your student going to stay for lunch or is your student going to leave for lunch? Um you know, if you're around Libertyville High School and you're walking distance, perhaps you're going to go home for lunch. Uh we would allow students out lunch uh to do out lunch, and students that can drive to school would be able to leave and. Uh then come back for their um afternoon periods um moving forward. But uh once we're able to determine, you know, roughly the number of students that we're dealing with. Then we can work, uh we can really game out the logistics, you know, kind of in a real time um level, and I appreciate the work that. Uh Tom and his uh logistics team, operations team has done, and John and his operations team have done, just to think about this. So uh that's, you know, um you know, that would be something that we would have to work through. So if you go all the way back to July, and Kevin will remember this, um you know, conversation. Um that he and I had as the Kevin is the FNF chair, and then we had at the board. And uh if we would need to, for example, Libertyville provides some additional outside space. Then there's always uh the possibility of uh renting or leasing, um you know, large tenting, think of a wedding tent. If we need uh additional space. But uh at this point, we'd be able to take a large facility and, you know, uh divide it. But uh a lot of that will be dependent on the number of students who actually come in to the building. Again, that would be a logistical hurdle. That we would um have to work through if we're going to move, um you know, if we're going to move that direction. Uh Dan and I have talked a little bit uh about transportation. And um if we have more students uh staying for a whole day. Uh we would still need to run the routes that we're running for both schedules. But we may well have some routes that have very limited uh ridership once we provide those and. Uh we might be able to work at while, you know, some additional route consolidation, be able to get students in on the half day. Uh morning and afternoon and then all day um moving forward. Again, that's a logistics uh thing that. Uh is uh manageable and something that we would need to work through. So um you know, in consideration. What we would do is um, you know, depending on how our uh discussion ends up tonight. What we would do is um the next couple of days, we do um a first survey of uh parents and students. Uh we'd ask them what option they're currently in uh anonymously, because uh right now, we're just looking for numbers. Um and then whether or not they believe their student would um stay in school and eat lunch. And uh if they choose the uh all day option. So they would tell us, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay in remote. I'm happy with that. I'm gonna stay in half day hybrid. I'm happy with that. Or I'd like to move to an all day option. And my student will eat lunch at school, or my student won't eat lunch at school. And that will give us. Um you know, basic information that we need uh to do some logistics that we've talked about tonight. Um and then uh we need to work on procedures and uh logistics, including social distancing. Uh contact tracing. Now, it's really important if we end up doing uh the all day uh an all day option. Um parents, and we will make it clear to parents, but we also want the board to know what what you already know. And that is if parents are sending their students back. That we will do six foot distancing or the best we can, because that's the only way we can put larger numbers. Of um students um into the building. Uh they'll have to be comfortable with that. And the other thing that we all have to understand. Is regardless of whether schools do six foot the best they can, the health department for contact tracing. For quarantining and contact tracing, they're using six feet. Okay, so if we have a staff member or a student right now. Um who, let's say, uh comes into school with test positive on By Next Now. Uh we might only have to contact trace with. You know, four or five people. If they're here all day, okay? And we're less than six foot social distancing, then that number of people that are going to be contact traced. And potential potentially quarantine are going to be higher, and we're just, we're just going to need to accept that. As a cost of um you know, opening up um you know, a bit more. And then um in terms of a starting date, what we would uh what we've talked about, and I think, you know, what what we feel. I think fairly strongly about is um when we come back from spring break, we would continue. Um what we're doing now, so remote, a hybrid half day. And we would want um a a delay until at least April fifth, Monday, April fifth, which is a week after spring break. Just uh to give us a chance to, you know, get ready, but also to give us a buffer. Between spring break and potential travel people will do and starting to bring larger numbers of students into the building. Um and I think as I talk to my colleagues, they're all looking at, you know, similar dates, the fifth through the twelfth. Most of the schools in our area have a similar um a break. So um that would give us a a one week buffer. Um along with our testing and and moving forward before we brought a larger number of students. along with our testing and, and moving forward before we brought a larger number of students, um, into the building at this time. So that's, that's what it would look like in practice. And the transition to that, uh, would be the preparation that we've, we've talked about, um, right now. For teachers, if you use, um, if you remember, uh, the schedule Bryant walked through, the teachers, if they have a first and second period class, they're teaching first and second right now. And if they have a third and fourth period class in the afternoon, they're teaching those classes right now. So, uh, there may be students, uh, and should be students in all of those classes right now in the half day. There'll just be, uh, potentially more students in those classes here. Some students in the half day hybrid and some students, um, in remote learning. So, um, again, I think the configuration or the confluence of a number of factors just bring us to the point that, um, we can actually have this conversation. You know, vaccinations weren't on the radar screen, um, in, in reality, uh, had not started, uh, when we made the decision, um, you know, to go January 19th with half day hybrid. Um, and then our testing is six or seven weeks along now. Um, and I think, you know, we feel pretty good about that testing and what, um, you know, our internal dynamics look like. Now, it is true, somebody's, I think in one of the comments tonight, somebody mentioned, um, you know, travel over spring break and, you know, we're going to ask, we're going to ask people to be smart, you know, over spring break. And, um, after we came through the winter holiday where we have, um, um, you know, Christmas and New Year's, um, typical times for lots of people to travel and families to get together, we did not have a huge spike. And pretty shortly after that, we started the decline that we're seeing now. So, um, we, you know, we would ask people to be smart, uh, when they return from vacation, if they're, you know, experience any symptoms, that they don't send their kids to school, um, and that they get their kids tested, but they don't send them to school. Uh, to do that, we can certainly work with Scott Murkrotz group. If somebody needs a place to go get tested, uh, we can work with Dr. Murkrotz group, who's doing our testing to have somebody tested offsite, not come into the building, uh, when they're not feeling well, um, moving forward. And, um, you know, that would allow us in. I think the last thing I would mention, because we don't know what numbers look like. It's possible at both of the campuses, it's more likely probably at Libertyville that, um, you know, we're going to need to take a look at the overall numbers of people who want to opt into, um, you know, an all day option, uh, because there is a, there is a capacity limit at some point, which we wouldn't be able to social distance people, probably even three feet. And so, um, you know, we need to take a look at those numbers, um, when they come in. And, uh, once we do, I think we'll, we'll have a better handle on it. Of course, we'll talk to the board about that. If we do the survey later, uh, this week, get that information back by Sunday or, you know, sometime Monday, we'll be able to share that with you at committee meetings on Monday, or if we're going to have a special board meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday, uh, next week to, to follow up on this, um, you know, a bit more. So those are the things that, you know, we've, um, you know, continued to talk about looking at this and we've, Pat and I have had, I think Pat mentioned that, you know, we're at least once a day, most days twice a day, uh, among the many things that we talk about. Um, um, you know, this is certainly one of the things that we've continued to talk about. Um, you know, we told the public from the beginning, we're going to continue to look at where we're at, where we stand, uh, against, you know, kind of state guidance and, uh, trending in terms of what we're doing, uh, to look at possibilities of, um, you know, giving kids the option to come back to school. But again, in this scenario, anybody that has a choice that they love right now. So if you love remote, you stay in remote, you love a half, half hybrid half day and you're very comfortable with your child being in here a half day, you're good to go. This would only allow, um, you know, folks that want an in-person all day option, um, to have that option. Um, so, um, Bryant, Rita, Dan, Tom, John, any, anything I missed along the way before we open it up and hear from the board and take some questions? I think that's a no, and that would be the first time that I probably ever hit all the points. So stop laughing, Casey, I see that. So, so, uh, Pat, I'll just throw it back to you and the board and we're, we're happy to talk to you and, and answer any questions that you might have. Or comments you want to make. Uh, Pat, you're muted.
Hey, you're muted.
Uh, anybody want to go first?
Casey Rooney, School Board.
I will.
Okay.
Um, I think we all know there's a growing body of evidence out there that, you know, kids are being negatively impacted by the prolonged lack of social interaction. And I think you guys have done an amazing job putting together a, a plan that will meet practically anybody's needs out there. Um, I am sure there were a lot of gymnastics around this, um, trying to put this together so that it meets the community's needs. And I am fully in support of starting with a full day option on April 5th. Um, I do like that we've accounted for spring break and potential travel, um, you know, keeping community safety in mind. But, um, I'll reiterate it again, I'm in full support of the plan. Anybody else?
Karen Lundstedt, Secretary.
I have kind of a side question, um, having to do with spring break. Um, right now, the city of Chicago has restrictions, but not the state about if you travel, where you travel and what's required when you get back. Um, but it does say that the, um, anyone who travels internationally, who comes back to the U S are required to present a negative PCR test no older than 72 hours, which I'm just thinking if people go to the Caribbean or the, or Mexico or, um, if in fact, I, I'm just curious about that. And if the state changes and says, we need to, you know, anyone who travels out to wherever you go over spring break would need to follow certain guidelines, would we then adhere to those?
Well, I, I think the answer is we'd love to adhere to those, Karen. The reality is people have no obligation to tell us if they've traveled, right? I mean, it's an honor system. So if you come back internationally, you should follow the guidance. But, um, we know, and, and I'm being just, you know, as the kids would say, real here, we know even from contact tracing, that there are parents who won't talk to us and will hang up the phone on us and the health department. So, um, that it has to be, it has to be on the honor system and families have to use good judgment. Now, that doesn't cloud all of the people working with us on contact tracing, right? So what I'm talking about the, are, are the exceptions, um, to that. And so, uh, being able to track that, you know, we don't have subpoena ability, we don't have, um, you know, we're not tracking where people are going, it's, it's literally all in the honor system as it was over the winter holiday, when people might have grouped with their families or they may have traveled places, um, then. So, uh, we will ask people, uh, to be responsible, um, you know, to follow those guidelines. And then, um, also to be honest with us, if their, uh, children are experiencing circumstances, not to send them to school, but to contact us. And we'll help work with them to facilitate testing for them, uh, if we need to do that, so.
And the, and the follow-up on that, the, the CDC guidance on international travel says that they need to, um, get tested, you know, no more than three days before their flight departs from. If, so if they're out of the country, they have to get a T, uh, you know, a test in that country before they get on, you know, the plane. Um, and they have to have proof of that, you know, in order to fly back, uh, to the U S. And then again, the recommendation from the CDC is that, um, if you are returning, you know, from international travel, that you should test again five to seven days after you return, that's a recommendation. But, you know, if they go to, if somebody goes out of the country, they do need that negative test just to get back.
Yeah.
The plane coming back in.
So, so we have that assurance. I, I just personally went to Hawaii and back and I, Hawaii would not let me in without a negative test. And they tested me again at the airport when I arrived. So it was very strict.
Excellent.
And that would, that would, nobody has a choice on that. You just can't, you know, if somebody travels internationally, it sounds like they can't get back into the United States without a test. So that's sort of, I'm just curious about, you know, if the state of Illinois, um, require, yeah, it's just interesting. There's certain ways to control it on a, um, national level.
Uh, Karen, to your example, if the state of Illinois did something similar. So when you return, you have to have a test within so many hours or they test you when you get back, right?
Yeah.
When you come back from Texas or Florida, wherever you, California, wherever you may go, um, coming back. And, uh, that would be interesting and for us it would be very helpful, right?
Um, and it's only if you're flying, obviously.
Yeah, exactly.
That they had, couldn't enforce it, but, um, yeah, well.
Right.
There's that, I mean, we know that if people have traveled internationally and presumably they would have flown, um, that they will have to provide that test before they get back and let back into the country.
Great point.
Don Carmichael, School Board.
Okay, anybody else?
On average, how many, uh, and this is probably more for Tom, because you have, uh, a greater number of people that are in the building. Um, how many kids do you have in a class generally right now?
Tom Coolen, Test Principal. Um, you know what, I'm sorry, Don, I didn't research that in advance, but, um, I would say on average, less than 10 is a more, you know, I would say between five and 10. There are a couple of classes, um, that have a higher number than that. We have some classes where we're seeing 14, 15 students if everybody shows up, um, on, you know, as they're scheduled to. Um, those classes are not the majority, um, but we do have a significant number of those. I would say probably between 10 and 20 classes that have, um, around 14 to 15 or 16 students. Um, and the average without doing the research is, um, between five to 10.
Don Carmichael, School Board.
So when we return, it's possible that you could have some classes that three feet would be about the best you could do around any one student in any direction.
It's, that, that is, yeah.
Yeah, it's not out of the realm of possibility, Don. We'll have to see, what we don't know right now is Tom's about 65% of the students in right now on a hybrid half day. So down from probably their high of, I don't know, Tom, 73 or 74 probably, um, was your peak at some point. So they're running about 65%. So what percentage of that 65% will choose an all day option? And we're, and we're going to have to survey to see what those numbers are.
And I think we're actually even a little higher now, uh, Dr. Lee, after the, um, the February 22nd kind of opt back in. Um, we might be back closer to 70%. Um, of our students are attending either in the morning or afternoon in cohort A and B. And we have approximately 80 students right now, uh, 60 to 80. Um, I didn't double check the numbers, forgive me on that. We have, uh, between 60 and 80 right now who are currently group D and are attending all day. Um, so then as Dr. Lee said, we would be adding, uh, more students to that mix. We would be looking at the numbers and how we would absorb them and where, um, those students would be and how that would affect class sizes.
Don Carmichael, School Board.
One of my big concerns going forward is the number of people who have said that they're, or I shouldn't say said, they just haven't, uh, done the testing. So we're offering, we've paid for testing for all of those people who are in the building, yet we still have a significant, significant portion of people who aren't testing, which means that those people will be in the mix when they're in the building with twice as many students in the class. I'm not saying it's an insurmountable concern, but it's definitely a concern. And that's more of a community concern. Um, because the closer those kids are, if they're not testing, we're not catching them in the net, then that increases the chance that they're going to bring that back to their homes if there's a transmission that occurs in a class.
Yeah, well, that's right, Don, I mean, to that point, a couple of things. I mean, uh, one, I think it's true, obviously, I think it's true that, um, schools are not, um, really significant community spreaders of the virus, but a lot of that I believe is because the mitigations have been so effective, all right? So we run the risk as we relax this that that could change. Um, to your point, you know, I mean, the reason why I think we're in good shape is, I think if you look at our school population positivity rate, it's probably on the order of maybe even less than 0.2%, all right? Cause we're finding what I would call the occasional case weekly kind of thing. We're doing over a thousand tests a week. So even if we had two cases a week at a thousand tests, it's 0.2%. And I think we're probably a little below that number. So I think when you think about our building and say, there's over a thousand people in there, it, the vast majority of people aren't near anybody that could, is likely to be exposed. So I think that's all really good news. I wish in those cases where we did have classrooms that are a little more crowded, that we could go back to those people and, you know, ask again, is there any way that we could enroll those people in our testing program? Because I'm still perplexed why there remains a significant resistance to doing that. It's honestly not helping the community, it's not helping our school. Um, and, and so again, I, I would just appeal to the community, people are asking what they can do to help. I think the number one thing they can do is actually help us by being tested. Uh, number two, it's practicing the mitigations, not only in school, but when you're out of school. I mean, because the one thing we also know that's a fact is kids aren't catching it at school, but they are catching it when they're not practicing the mitigations when they're out of school. And they are catching it because those are the kids that we're finding, um, when we test them in school, all right? So, I mean, I think this is really a great opportunity for everybody to double down and pitch in, because the last thing in the world we want to do is open up and close down and open up and close down. But I, I feel really confident with our numbers where they are, um, that, you know, even with some, uh, inability to social distance in all places, even though we absolutely need to and will wherever we can, I, I really feel confident that we can do this and do this safely.
And then I have one more question for Mark.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Don.
Uh, you turned on just at the right time there, Mark. Uh, I thought I was going to catch you, um, blindsided there. Uh, we, we spent some money to, uh, have our HVAC systems looked at, uh, upgraded, tweaked. Um, we did airflow monitoring throughout the building. Um, could you just speak to, um, how we have improved airflow in the building? And what the turnover in a typical classroom is right now?
Mark Koppmann, B and G.
Sure. Um, so right now we have our mechanical system, uh, all HVACs set in what you call reverse economizing. Um, so we are, um, when a temperature fluctuates outside, the dampers fluctuate. So when it, uh, when it got real cold outside, we still kept 10% coming in. So, uh, we're averaging 30% or better, you know, with, like I said, temperature fluctuates with the percentage of outside air coming into each room. Uh, each air handling unit is designed, uh, to go range, uh, between four and six, uh, changeovers per hour, per room. Um, so we're averaging most of our units running around five. Um, we've upgraded our, our filtraries, filters wherever we could, uh, that could, um, handle MERV 13. Uh, so we've, uh, uh, put MERV 13 filters in the equipment that can handle it. And that other equipment, we've gone to MERV eight filters. Um, so we are, we are doing that. Um, when we get, when the weather changes here, we'll be able to change our programming over to, uh, if we choose to do that, where we can do, uh, uh, midday and evening purges. So what we've done is normally our system would run about 16 hours a day and then go into unoccupied. We've increased that to 20 hours a day. Uh, so basically from midnight to, um, 4:00 AM, the system goes into unoccupied. And your thermostats, you have settings, you know, where temperature can go lower in the room, um, say in the wintertime, um, down to 65, 60 degrees. Uh, then 4:00 AM starts back up, the dampers open, uh, up accordingly. And, you know, you bring your room temperature back up, uh, um, to whatever the room is set at. So, um, we are maximizing the airflow, uh, with the capabilities of our equipment that we have following the CDC guidelines at this point right now.
So reverse economizing, that essentially just says, we're not going to run it economy mode. We're going to spend money to heat extra outside air so that we can have more fresh air in the building all the time.
Correct, yes.
Tom Coolen, Test Principal. I also just have to say, uh, once again, Dr. Lee was correct. We are running at, I just checked our numbers, we're at 66% in the hybrid, uh, not in the, uh, 70% that I thought we had climbed back up towards. So, uh, Dr. Lee, I should have never doubted you in the first place. I have, uh, learned that time and time again, but, uh, once again, for the record, you, you had that number correct. 66% hybrid, 34% remote is our, uh, current number.
Yeah. Hey, Tom, so along those lines, Tom, if all 66% decided they want to go full day and nobody goes half day, can we Yeah. Hey, Tom, so along those lines, Tom, if all 66% decided they want to go full day and nobody goes half day, can we accommodate that? Or is that where we're gonna have to take some judgment?
Well, yeah, so that would be uh, the, 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 the challenge there would be to accommodate it with the dis, the social distancing. Because that's where you would get classrooms where you would not be able, you'd have full classrooms essentially in that situation where space between students would be, you know, um, probably a, a foot to two feet uh, when they're in desks. So that would be the discussion the board would have to understand and have. Um, and we as a school would have to take, there's just impossible for me to uh, set every student who wants to come back and redo schedules so that there's complete balance across the uh, you know, reassigning them different classes means they would have to have new teachers, for example. Or that they would have to have different times during the day um, where they, you know.
Yeah, none of us, none of, none of us want to see that.
I'd say, Pat, that's why I said we're gonna have to take a look at the numbers. And then um, you know, we'd have to reserve the right to do some capping if we needed to do that. Uh, and then we can talk about what that would look like if we have to do that. Uh, but that would be part of our contingency planning. So I mean, for example, certainly, uh, I think I can speak for Tom and John here. You know, if we, if we had to do that, uh, first priority would be seniors, getting seniors back in the building, right? And then developing some power, you know, some, some order of priority, you know, after that. But uh, let's cross that bridge when we see what those numbers look like.
Okay.
The plan right now is to, to uh, do a survey this week and you would have data back to us by our um PMP and FNF committee meetings?
Sure. That's a plan done. And it would be initial, like, we're, we're not looking for sign and blood commitment. We're just trying to get an idea, right? Rough idea. And then um, once we see what we've got, then we can do some, you know, we can do, uh, do some additional um, gaming out, if you will, um, in terms of that. Uh, as we move forward.
Pat Grudy, President.
Okay. And then I just, I want to just step back and ask a question and mostly for the public to, to hear where we're at here. This is really our first our first chance since we started the hybrid to kind of check in and, and see how it's going. Can anybody give us a sense of how we're doing academically in terms of progressing through the curriculum at this point? I know we have, we haven't really had that conversation, but does anybody have any feedback on that?
Tom, John, Rita, dive in, guys and lady.
Have a big, big picture in general. I mean, what are we, what are we hearing from teachers in particular?
On Gou Liang, Principal.
John, go ahead.
I uh, I'll take a stab at it. Look, you know, at the beginning of the year, we told teachers to um, take their curriculum and focus on what was essential to the course. Right? And it's so, it, it didn't mean that they trimmed out important information. It didn't mean that they watered down the course, but they said, alright, what are the essential components of the course? And they've been working hard to get those essential components um, in. But I will say, as I talked to teachers, I even had a conversation uh, with one of our AP teachers uh, today, who said, look, even that considered, I still am behind. I still feel behind. Uh, and, and I think that's an AP course in which it was almost impossible to, to trim anything out uh, in, in the sense that everything is essential according to the college board. But when you talk to teachers who um, you know, who aren't teaching uh, AP, AP courses, curriculums that are already, curriculum that's already decided, they still are feeling like um, you know, it's, it's a rush. It's, it's trying to get all of that material in. And, and part of that is just the disruption of, of the schedule, whether it's trying to um fit two days into one block schedule. Teachers are used to that and that's, seems like easy math, but it doesn't always work that way. Um, you know, the Wednesdays are great for teachers to be able to have that third contact uh, with their students, but they've had to figure out how to blend that into it. So um, yeah, I, I think teachers are feeling under the gun, but they're working hard to get it all in. And uh, you know, just like last semester, Pat, to your, to your question about achievement, just like last semester, uh, we are seeing, you know, more si- significant numbers of kids even after one progress uh, that are struggling with, with Ds and Fs more than uh, have been in, in prior years. So we're starting those, those initiatives uh, that we implemented towards the end of uh, first semester earlier in this semester. Um, but uh, yeah, in, in general, they're working hard and trying to do the best they can.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom?
Tom Coolen Test Principal.
Yeah, I think John, John represented what I, I know well. I think a lot of teachers, uh, the only thing I would add is um, the teachers, you know, of um, the courses that have, are non-AP, for example, have made those really good decisions about what is the essential content that will help kids advance in the curriculum for the next year. And that's where they're putting their uh, intensive focus on. Um, so that kids are getting what they need in order to take that next step um, in their curriculum progression.
Rita, how about you? Anything to add? Okay.
Princess Lee Superintendent.
So, and, and I would just, you know, I'll just uh, close the question out or the answers to the question. By uh, that's um John's response and Tom's response and the um, reality of the pandemic and pandemic and the impact on schedule is um, very common uh, to other high performing um, districts that I network with and that John and Tom network with, uh, mostly them through their uh, conference. Me through both conferences, but a, a little bit of wider net. Um, and those are similar at, at all schools that, you know, are doing a remote or a, a hybrid scenario.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else want to uh, say anything? Kevin, Jim? Uh, let's see.
Can I just ask one more? Oh.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
I just asked one more question. Just, I want to make sure I'm clear on lunch. If students go all day and they are gonna stay in the building, will they be uh, will that be a situation where they are socially distanced since they won't be? And, and will they be asked to wear their mask as soon as they're done eating?
Sure.
So I'm picturing kids will be sitting alone with six feet before the next child, no kid right across from them. If they're at a, you know, is that, is that what it's gonna look like? Because if we can't socially distance in the classrooms, seems like lunch would be an important time to make sure.
Yes, if they stay for lunch, it would be a yes to both your questions, Karen.
Thank you.
Yeah, we would distance them. And if we need to procure additional space, you know, via tents or those kinds of things, we'll get that uh, to provide that space. John, um, just the nature of the beast in the two buildings. If you uh, think about Libertyville High School when it was built, it's, and it's been built on several times in different decades. So the main part of Libertyville High School was built like all buildings in the 50s. Okay, it's, it's got smaller, it has smaller classrooms, it's got different sized classrooms, the hallways are very narrow. And remember when Libertyville was built, it didn't have 2,000 students back then, right? And so as it's been added on to, you can, if you've been around schools, you can actually walk through the building and, and almost, I mean, I can tell what decade the building was built in. Vernon Hills, on the other hand, is a more modern you know, facility, meaning that um, you know, the hallways are much wider, the ceilings are very high. The classrooms are more of a standard than they are at Libertyville and they're generally, you know, more square footage. So um, you know, it's, it's a tighter issue and it's more of an issue um, you know, at, at Libertyville. And John's probably got a little bit more flexibility depending on the facilities that we use for uh, even lunch. But, you know, we'll have to determine again how many students are gonna stay and how many students are gonna, you know, not stay. And uh, then um, you know, try to do our planning from there.
Jim Batson, VP.
Okay.
I'll just um, have a couple of quick comments. Um, one is it's, you know, it's good. We're giving options, you know. Those that want to stay remote can stay remote. Those that want to come in hybrid certainly have that option. Those that want to stay all day have, will have that option. So that's a good thing. My only concern would be opening up the full day option may actually reduce the number of hybrid students because if a student's, hey, I'm okay being hybrid if only so many kids are in my classroom in the morning and the rest of them are coming in the afternoon. But now if a certain percentage of those will be all day and I'm gonna be feel crowded in the room, I may as well just stay home. So I think we're there's a little bit of risk there that will actually, our numbers will actually go down, which may help us from a social distancing perspective, but it won't help us in the, from the standpoint of trying to get students back in the building.
Like, I think, Jim, you're, that's possible for sure. And I think the other thing is if a parent and a student agreed that, you know, they still wanted the half-day option, they're still only in a more crowded building for a half a day, right? They're not there all day. So we're not taking, we're not remove, we're not suggesting or recommending that we remove that option altogether, which would force that person that says, okay, I'm still okay being in a half a day. And I'm not really comfortable being all day, but you have to go all day, right? So uh, I think, you know, we're gonna see what the numbers look like, I think. You know, once, once we, you know, once we get the survey, but people will still have that option.
Kevin Huber, School Board.
Yeah, I think uh, I just wanted kudos to Mark for getting the buildings ready. Kudos to Prentice and for getting the teachers in line for vaccines. Uh, I mean, if, if not now, when? So everybody knows my position. I don't need to, to continue down the path of but uh, I'm anxiously looking forward to the emotion next week and just to kind of see where everybody stands. But again, and most importantly, also kudos to Pat for uh, the testing. Because a, at, at the end of the day, uh, the testing has found asymptomatic friends or kids, I'm sorry, some of which have been friends of my kids. It's, it's really, it's preserved my daughter's senior basketball year. Thank you. I mean, you know, that, that's, that's selfish, but that also, you want to talk about mental and emotional health for a kid? Nothing better. So again, kudos, Pat testing, Mark buildings. And again, something Don asked, and I think Mark didn't point out, as the weather gets nicer, I'm sure we're gonna open the windows in the buildings as well, which is gonna circulate the air even greater than the four to six, right? Mark, I mean, I think I don't, I don't know how sophisticated the systems are, but I would assume if you open the windows, a, you, you're gonna get a greater airflow.
You're still circulating this, the, your changeover inside the room is still the same. You're just bringing in more fresh air. And as it gets warmer, our dampers were open to a higher percentage. So yes, opening windows uh, works great. Um, it, it all depends on your comfort in the room. So we had teachers that opened the windows when it was 15 degrees out. Um, and if that made them comfortable in the room, you know, that's what they did, so.
But yeah, and again, I just, again, it was a total team effort to get it going. I know it was a, it was a hard process from July on. But again, thank you to all for even considering doing this. And again, I'm anxious to see the motion and vote next week.
Uh, and Kevin, one, one other thing regarding testing, and I, I may have not made this point earlier. And that is uh, because we are requiring um, athletes to be tested, as the spring season comes forward, we have a larger number of athletes than the current winter season, much larger. So for example, football is starting. And you know, with 100 kids at Libertyville and John, I don't know, it's in the whole program, 60, 70 kids at Vernon Hills, in the whole program, you've got soccer. Um, you know, track and field, you know, you've got some things that are coming that are very large numbers. So that's gonna drive our numbers up. We still want to appeal to people. We still, Pat, I, I'm with you, having done the testing six or seven times myself. It's, it's a no-brainer. It is so simple. It's so easy. It's so fast. As we heard our student representatives say last week at the board meeting, right, to a person, they said that. So we still want to encourage that, but our numbers are necessarily gonna go up because the number of kids that we have involved in athletics, they all have to be tested. Um, and we have the ability to do that because it's an activity that you're not guaranteed to participate in by law versus going to school, which is a property right. So uh, that should help, but we still need to make the, you know, we still need to continue to make the appeal.
And Princess, that's for all activities, not just athletics.
Yep.
Uh, what, uh, let's clarify.
There's some, there's some, there's some one-off. So if, if um, you know, Tom and John could probably pick one out, but if there's, if there's three or four kids and they meet once every, once a month. Okay, those kids are not being tested, but band, orchestra, choir, student council, you know, things that would come in in larger numbers, yes, they're all being tested.
Yep.
They're, let me back up. They're being required to test, you know, whenever they start up.
Princess, can I ask a quick question piggybacking on the testing?
Sure.
So the week after spring break, the kids will resume their same testing schedule that they've been going through up till this point. So everyone who's been tested will be tested that week before. If we decide that we're gonna open up to, to full day learning as an option on the 5th, the week before will be, okay.
I think, and I'm gonna, I'm, Brian's shaking his head and he's kind of our testing guru inside. So uh, I, I was pretty sure the answer was that to yes, but it's nice to have affirmation, Casey, right?
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify for anyone who's listening that may be wondering if their child's gonna be tested before the building were opened further. Okay, thank you.
And one, one other comment on testing, uh, the one resident wrote a very thorough and, and good uh, note there tonight on testing. If we ever felt we needed to, we could pivot to an alternate. Um, we've had conversations with Passport Health and um, you know, they've told us if we, if we wanted, for example, to use the U of I test, we could still do that. Um, I don't think right now we see any need to do that, although uh, I did see yesterday, they did finally get their FDA approval. Um, their emergency use approval uh, last night, which was a key reason why we didn't go with them originally. But if we, for whatever reason, felt that our testing wasn't meeting our needs, we would have a number of opportunities to pivot to something else if we, if we felt that was necessary.
And if it was necessary for the fall, we could consider their U of I option now that it's been FDA approved.
That's correct.
For sure. And, and I think, you know, Pat and I spent a lot of time talking about this with his expertise with Dr. Morcott. Who uh, would have been happy to do either test for us. And you know, we just weren't sure when that UA, the U of I test, you know, they thought, they thought, they thought they were gonna get their EUA or, and you know, we're seven weeks into our testing now. So, you know, thank goodness we went with, you know, by next now. Um, because we've been testing for seven weeks and some of those schools that are committed to uh, the U of I test won't be able to start testing and probably until next week at least, I would guess. Um, so it's, it's all good. Um, Pat, just a couple more comments and we'll see if uh, anybody else wants to say anything. So just, just a couple of reminders again here. Not only to the board, because you've heard me talk about this, but also to uh, the audience that would be watching tonight. Again, we don't want to lose sight of the uh, staff in here, uh, because um, some, sometimes in the emotion of the discussions that we've had over a period of time, people forget that the board is also an employer to almost 500 employees in the district, okay? So part of what's opened, one of the components that we hit on earlier that's opened this door is staff vaccination. So again, it looks like you know, around the time that we would come back on April 5th, thereabouts, that anybody who wanted to be vaccinated, who is an educator in Lake County, would have their first and second vaccinations. So we, we would, we would be in a situation where, where the educators, the employees of the district um, you know, would be well protected um, as well as, and that's an important point. Second, just to go back to social distancing. So parents that would select a full option within reason, if we had to do capping, of course, we would do that. Um, and we don't know that yet, but social distancing, um, again, if you would make a selection to bring your student back to school, it would be under the understanding that we will do six foot or the best we can. Okay? And people would need to know that going in. And as Bryant has pointed out a number of times to us, talking with us, because he's our interface with Lake County Health Department on quarantining and contact tracing, that the county will still use six feet, right? So if we are using a standard that's six foot or the best we can do, and it's less than six feet, that will necessarily mean that we may be doing more quarant, more students may be quarantined. You know, it's not gonna be a hundredfold, but more students will be quarantined because the space around those students is gonna be reduced in some places during the building.
Yeah, so let, let, let me, you know, kind of touch base on that a little bit more and just give you just kind of some examples. So currently, if you have a student that comes in the building and tests, um, you know, goes through our by next now and tests positive, let's say they're there first and second period. So at the end of second period, they go down and do their by next now testing. Our nurses, again, they're, they're the ones doing the, you know, all the work, um, really with contact tracing. So they um, do the second test for the student. Um, and if that comes back positive, they then go and do contact tracing for that student. So that student was here first period and second period. And so you go, you're looking at two classrooms, you're working at, you know, what is the layout of the classroom? And so you go, you're looking at two classrooms, you're working at, you know, what is the layout of the classroom? What was the seating chart? Who is sitting near them? And then anyone within, you know, six feet. The other thing you have to look at is you're also going two days back. So if that was on a Monday, you know, they're going to also ask questions about where you were, you know, where the student was and talk to the families about Sunday. If this happened on a Tuesday, they go back to the classes on, you know, Monday and Tuesday. So now jump ahead to an all day student and let's say they test positive, you know, Tuesday afternoon. The nurses, you know, again, they'll, they're doing all the work there with contact tracing. They're going to go back through the schedule from Tuesday and from Monday. You know, so if that student was in all day, you know, they're in more classes. So now they have to go through more seating charts, more classes. And then if you have more students in the class, anyone that's within that six foot will have to quarantine. And the quarantine dates again are 10 to 14 days. So we can do the minimum of 10, it may be up to 14 days. Again, depending on the situation with the student that goes into quarantine, whether or not they have symptoms. So that, that's what they, you know, would be looking at. So there, you know, there's going to be, you know, more contact tracing work, you know, done in the buildings by our nurses. And, you know, working with the student, working with the teachers and working with the families, so.
Pat Gruddy President.
So Brian, to say that simply though, in the ideal case where every classroom has every student not closer than six feet to any other student, if we find a case, we end up not having to quarantine anybody from a classroom perspective.
Correct. And we've had that, and we've had that a little bit now, is that we haven't had to.
Right. They might if they're on the football team, but that's a different story. But from a classroom perspective, there would be no need to quarantine any students. In this case, given that it is likely that there will be classrooms where students are, say, three feet apart. If a student is positive in a classroom, anybody that is less than six feet will have to quarantine. That's just Lake County, that's the Lake County rules.
Yes, correct.
So again, I say, you know, we kind of look at the testing and say, really, a reason why kids are getting tested is to make sure they know whether or not they're positive so that they don't infect other students. To all those students who are not getting tested, I, I would almost just argue or ask, you know, out of respect for your fellow student, it would really help a lot if you could also get tested. Because I really, I really don't want to see us having to quarantine a whole lot of people here. I think that would not be good. But again, our positivity rates are very low. I think from a risk perspective, that puts us in a really good place. If we can continue to engage in good mitigations, again, not only when we're at school, but when we're out in the community where we know people are catching the infection, it will allow us to really have a good finish to the year here.
Pronto superintendent.
And I think ultimately, we kind of go back to where we started tonight, and that is, you know, for high schools to open now, next year, the following year, as long as COVID is, is still around in some fashion or form, they're going to have to flex on the six foot social distancing, or you're never going to be able to open with the volume of kids that you have in a high school. I mean, just, I mean, 2,000 at Libertyville, 16, 1700 at Vernon Hills, 4,500 at Stevenson. I mean, just you go around the horn, the number of kids in a high school and a middle school that mirrors a high school are large. So you're going to have to flex on. And again, I think, you know, with everything we know now and all of the other things that we're doing, you know, when the state says maintain a distance of at least six feet when feasible, I think we can look at all of the other things that we're doing because many of the things that we were able to do here, unfortunately, and I really mean that unfortunately, 98% of the school districts in the state of Illinois can't do. And so we're, we're just, we're in a different place. And we're blessed with what we have here and we're able to do some things that other communities have. And as a result, we're able to have a conversation like we're having tonight about providing an option for all day that other school districts wouldn't be able to do because they haven't been able to do the other things that we've done.
Lisa Hassel School Board.
Hey, Prentice, I, I think that based on the community rates, based on our testing program, based on the ability to get all of the staff, not just the teachers, but all of the staff potentially vaccinated by April 5th. This makes a ton of sense. And if you'll, if you'll indulge me for a minute, I do want to give credit to everybody who's been involved from the beginning of the school year. The administration, the teachers, the support staff, building grounds, I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody. But Pat for instituting and Lee spearheading the testing and doing so much work to get our metrics so that we can make evidence-based decisions. Everybody has been working as hard as they can. And I, I want to thank everybody in the administration, the principals, the staff, the teachers, the support, everybody who has really, under very difficult circumstances, always had in mind the students. And you have my full support moving forward with this.
Pat Gruddy President.
Okay, so I, I mean, I, we're, we're not taking a formal vote, but I'm clearly hearing a consensus to move forward here. So I think at this point, let's get the survey out, let's look at the numbers and we'll make a final recommendation next week is what it sounds like.
Yeah, Pat, we'll come back to you with a, a work on this a little bit more and, and polish it up a bit and make a recommendation to you next week. So here's the question for the board then. So we have committee meetings, PNP and FNF Monday night, remember? Probably prior to our first committee meeting, or I suppose before FNF, the second committee meeting, you're going to do a walking tour of the new facilities, socially distanced, of course. So, you know, we need to allow a little time for that and we're going to have our committee meetings. So do you want to have this special meeting that night so we could do it before, in between, after? I think with some of the questions you've asked and your favorable comments tonight, that wouldn't have to be a long meeting. You know, we quickly review everything and where we think we're headed. And you would authorize us to go off vote yes and authorized us to go out and work on it.
Princess, do you think it might be possible to consider postponing the tour if we're going to add this to the agenda Monday? Or do you think we have time for all of it?
It's, it, it depends on, on what you think. It, it, it seems like we're at a good place right now. I mean, with you, with the board. So, you know, we can probably, I would say half an hour or less, easy. You know, probably work through this. But it's, it's, it's really up to all of you. I mean, you've been waiting a long time to take that tour. I would hate you to have to cancel that, but I think we could do a special meeting. You know, we're not looking at probably being there, you know, two, three, four hours. I, I think based on our conversation tonight, but it's really up to all of you. We'll, we'll do whatever you want to do.
Why don't, why don't we do the special meeting first? Because there probably are going to be people from the public that want to come in and I'd really like to keep it on schedule. And then why don't we just go with PNP and FNF and do the tour at the end of FNF when we're finished and we can just kind of end with a tour?
Good idea.
Are, are we certain? Are we certain we'll have enough data and everything that we need, all the information we need in less than a week?
Well, Jim, I think what all we need now is we need to get an idea on numbers for, for John and Tom and to work with the teams and, and we'll be able to report that out, but there may be some more fine tuning, but remember we've got between now and, you know, if, if we need to meet the following week in a special meeting, we can do that just to say, okay, now we've crunched everything out, this is what it looks like. I would be, we would have to have some additional conversation with you if we had to cap at some point. So what would that look like? How will we do that? We'd want to talk to you about that. But I think for purposes of Monday night and potential decision-making, authorizing us really to move forward. But yes, we're going to do this, let's work on the logistics. I, I think we will have what we need on Monday. I mean, I'm looking at Bryant, I, you know, Rita, Dan, John and Tom, I don't, I don't see any issues with that.
Daniel Stanley Business.
Yeah, I'm just, my only thing is, you know, I, I think some of the committees have got, we've got some stuff going on on Monday in terms of like just business. So there's, just be ready for a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah. So that with the tour at the end, if we're, if we would, for whatever reason, don't get through it, we can always say at the end, we're not going to do a tour.
Yeah, that's true. I guess that would.
But I think, I definitely think we need to make a decision on the rest of this soon here because people want to know.
Yep, that would be our flex space.
Yeah.
So Pat, I would look around to the team, maybe go around real quick if my folks will unmute and see if there's anything else, you know, for the good of the order that again, I, I might have missed or, or just stepped over tonight. Bryant, are we good? Rita? Dan? Tom?
Yeah, I would just say, the, it'll be a quick turnaround on that first survey. So we're going to need our community to be ready for that and ready to send it back to us. Because obviously just, you know, we'll be, we'll be producing it, getting it out tomorrow or Thursday. And to get the results to you by Monday night, we'll need everybody to send it back to us right away. Thank you.
Yeah. And Tom, you know, at a minimum, you're going to probably be able to see the percentage of people currently in hybrid, either staying half day or going full day or going remote. We, we can certainly work on a percentage basis and make decisions based on that if we need to, I think.
Well, sure.
Pronto superintendent.
And again, that's, it's, if we get, if we got to the point where we would have to do some capping, that's, it's, that becomes, what does that look like in the logistics of doing that, right? Doesn't prevent us from moving forward with an all day option. It's just how do we do the all day option, depending on what we see. But once we get some initial numbers, I think that'll give us, that'll give us a good look see. And I think, you know, well, as we did last summer, we had a high return rate on the, on the surveys when we initially asked, you know, would you, what option would you pick? I suspect we'll have a high turnout on this survey, we'll get a good return. And what we've learned to do in surveying over the years is we're not going to give, you know, we're going to give people two or three days to get the information back to us. Mary will do a couple of reminders along the way. And, you know, it'll be a Google survey, so it'll be easy. You know, it'll calculate, we go right to pie charts and so I think we got to be good.
Yeah, I think we'll get enough, we'll get enough data to make the decision. It won't be the final roll call list of all the people going one way or the other, but it'll be enough to make the decision.
Yeah. One question on the survey, forgive me, did I hear that the survey was anonymous though? Or did I mishear that?
Yeah, just like we did this summer, as we're, we, as we don't want to make people make a commitment right now. So Mary, Mary's got a tool that she can use that will only go to one family, it will only allow a return from one family. That's what we really want right now. I don't want to see what Dan Stanley wants to do right now. I just want raw numbers. We'll do a second survey, okay, once we get those initial numbers and then we'll make people make a commitment.
So Pat, to your, to your point, you won't necessarily know which kids are flipping, like maybe it depends on how the survey is structured, but.
We'll ask the right questions that way because that is important. We need, we need to know what they're in now and what they're going to choose to do next.
And that's the way the survey will be framed. I think I said that earlier, but that's, John's exactly right. That's the way we'll frame it. What are you in now and what would you choose going forward? Knowing that a few people will change their mind along the way, but you know, we'll, we'll get a pretty good sense.
And will you stay for lunch?
And will you stay for lunch with Principal Tom, right? Or Principal John?
Okay. Can I jump in with a brief ask? I was trying to think of what the unintended consequences are and I recently had to wear a mask all day, every day and found that to be disturbing. And I remember, John, you were telling us about the basketball player that ran out of the gym, peeled his mask off and squeezed it out. Like our, our kids are going to suffer some mask fatigue. Right now, teachers in the building, Tom, you're included, you're sitting right there in your office. While you're in your office, you can take your mask off, but the kids are not going to be in a position where they're going to have an opportunity to do that easily. They can always go outside. But I would wonder if we, we don't think about getting some tents up anyway. When it's raining in April and our kids need to get a break and go outside for a minute, they're not going to have a place to do that if it's raining like crazy. So if it's, if I'm not going overboard with this, like too much detail right now, but could we think about maybe providing some outside space that allows the kids to get a break during the day?
Yeah, it might not be tense, John, but I mean, that could be, that could be part of it. John, I see Tom nodding, he said, John, can we work?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, the question will still be though, you know, right now, our, our athletes are outside and they have to mask up the whole time too. So while they're on campus, we've been asking students to mask up. So I don't, I don't know that just pushing them out in my courtyard, I'm going to say, and take off your masks as well. So.
Right. Well, is there a place where that can happen?
Yeah, I understand.
Safely, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Well, that's a logistics question and we can factor that into the, factor that into the thinking, work with Tom and John and their teams on that.
Sure.
Okay, Pat, I think that's it from us.
Okay. I guess if there are no other questions, we can adjourn, right? Do we need a motion to adjourn there?
Oh, you probably, just as practice.
So is there a motion to adjourn? Who's second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Not roll call, please?
Carmichael.
Hi.
Gruddy.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Good night. See you on, see you on Monday.